All right, we're on a tight schedule, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the workshop that starts at 4:30 regarding schools of choice.
Hey, Ms. Mayor. Hey, can we get some AC on up in here? One more time? Oh, I'm sorry.
Red. Um, I don't know what it is, but I lost mine, and I know you showed me this example.
Usually there's two tabs.
Excellent.
All right, we can go ahead and start on the workshop. Yeah, I'm not sure, Ozzy, are you gonna start the presentation?
Don't tell her that. Okay, yeah.
Or who, I don't know how y'all have it set up, so, but let's go ahead and start, I don't wanna go behind schedule.
So, good evening, everyone. We asked for this workshop based off of requests from the Executive Committee back in March. There were some key areas to focus on and look at, to bring back with suggestions or proposals, or just the research even, not necessarily proposal or suggestion, but, so, this workshop is to give back the information that we found and gathered through our committee meetings and the research and development part of it, and to open it up to any questions that you have in the several areas of, the several topic areas regarding schools of choice. So one of them was the school name, the changing the name of the program from schools of choice to something that is less associated with federal school choice programs.
Ozzy, can you tell us which document you're gonna be using?
Oh, sure, so I had Guide K-12 up. We're looking at the discussion.
Thank you.
How do I get that up here? The board doc, the discussion board doc? Oh, okay. Sorry. Sorry about that, I didn't, no. So the first docu, the first section of the modification considerations is the name change. We looked at several different options, we considered several different options. Again, it's something that the board could give us some insight and feedback on, what kind of names they like, if they even wanna change the name. If we're gonna be, if we're gonna go with federal and state recognizable names like school choice, the academies are magnet academies, so it would be a good choice to go with regular national state recognizable names. However, there's so many different options, there's so many adjectives that you can tie to what our academies are, excellent, advanced, elite, immersed, because every single one of these academies is essentially an immersion program. So you have language immersion, you have environmental science immersion, you have arts immersion, so they're all technically these immersion theme-based learning environments. So the name really should reflect that more than just schools of choice.
A question on the, on the magnet, I'm assuming, Madam President, that, it's a workshop, so we can, okay. On the magnet, I understand magnet schools, there's either a, like either a legal or an accepted industry standard for magnet, the word magnet means something.
Yes.
And can you explain that?
So magnet, the true definition of magnet is "A public school offering special instruction and programs not available elsewhere designed to attract a more diverse student body from throughout a school district, also known as theme-based learning environments." That's what the US Department of Education recognizes them as, and that's what Louisiana State Department of Education recognizes them as.
To be, to, can you self-certify or self-proclaim that you're a magnet, or do you have to be, is there an outside entity that accredits magnet schools?
Yes. So Magnet Schools of America is what works, they, this organization accredits and develops all these programs that the US Department of Education uses to, when, for example, when you have a magnet grant, or when schools are coming out of DSEG orders, or they wanna implement theme-based learning environments, the US Department of Education works closely with Magnet Schools of America, which accredits programs, certifies them, and develops pillars of focus areas for these programs, and grows them. So they're, they're an organization that not just lobbies to support these, they work with the government very, very closely to, to assist and facilitate the way that the whole program works nationally.
So, the criteria to be a magnet school, is it anything in addition to what we're currently doing?
Not necessarily, no. The, the accreditations and the certifications, those take it to another level of recognition. It helps in funding, it helps in curriculum development, professional development, networking opportunities, so to be recognized as a magnet, to call ourselves as a magnet at a first level, it brings attention to us as a district for all these other opportunities.
Well, since this is a workshop, I'm gonna say, I like that idea, I like, I think that it helps, you know, one of the things I learned today from talking to Dr. Agalov before the meeting was that it seems that our student enrollments, and I don't wanna steal your thunder, has increased significantly, and I think a part of our student enrollment increasing significantly this year is that we, we built something and did something as the school system that made us highly competitive, and, you know, we put something out there that people wanted to attend, and we were able to compete with the surrounding charter schools and private schools to bring students back into the system. I think that if we take our schools of choice and go down this path of maybe getting them accredited as magnet schools and holding them to that magnet school criteria, that it could be beneficial to us. That's just my opinion, but...
Any questions? Any other questions? Yes, sir.
I just wanna point out that I think we should, we should move cautiously on this kind of recognition or whatever, and you, you mentioned three or four times, the federal government, the federal government this, grant this, and grant that, it's not always good to be in line with the federal government on all levels. And another thing is, grants bring with it strings, so we must be very careful as to how we accept these grants, what kinds of strings are attached, and what happens when the grants go away? Are we left holding the bag? I mean, I think a great percentage of our educational system should be, should be more on a state level than on a federal level.
Right. So the term magnet doesn't necessarily mean that you're applying for a magnet grant. The term magnet and the magnet grant thing, that all happened many, many years ago, about 40 years ago, when they started looking at school districts on how to diversify them. So the term magnet and magnet grant are completely separate terms, and different concepts. The term magnet means exactly what we've been doing for the last 30 years or 40 years, and making it into schools of choice, prior to being schools of choice, they were considered magnet academies at LPSS, they were individual magnet academies, because the term magnet literally means those theme-based learning environments that are unique, that aren't offered at every single school. What I was trying to explain was that by recognizing our programs as magnet, the way that they are in terminology, when we go apply for a magnet grant, or a, another kind of grant, or a state grant, or something else, it always, it ups our game in a sense, because they see that we have a different level of standards, we recognize that we're theme-based learning, theme-based learning environments, and it, because it's so nationally and recognized, and it's recognized in the state of Louisiana, for example, East Baton Rouge Parish, they call their programs magnet, New Orleans calls their programs magnet, it's just a simple word to define what the programs are. So it takes us up to that level to be as competitive as well, so when we do apply for a grant, they see what we are, so it's not necessarily because we're a magnet program, we're gonna qualify and get every single magnet grant, and that's, they work together like that, it doesn't, it's not that.
Okay, you have a lot to go through, so...
So the next topic was, well, entry criteria was one. General program modification, name change, enrollment, looking at enrollment, looking at entry criteria, enrollment expectations, some of that affects application management as well. When you, when we talk about enrollment, currently, we use an A and a B list. One of the things that we'd like the board to, to discuss and ask questions is about the A and the B list. The A and the B list came about when we were trying to get out of our DSEG order. We have been in unitary status for a number of years, and it can go two ways. Right now, the A and the B list could also subject us to a possible desegreg, discrimination, you know, there's always risk at removing it as well, but the A and the B list came when, at a time when we had a flip of our demographics, we had less low socioeconomic or less one race versus the other. Well, now we're a Title I, now most of our population, over 60% of our population is low socioeconomic, so to have an A and a B list to balance the schools, it doesn't make any sense, there's no logic to it in the real world today's sense, because you have schools that are literally Title I schools, and then as a district are Title I. So there's the, the other side of it too is, these A and the B lists that we have, let's say, Eleo Judees is here, or Health Careers, they have, they open up the seats for 50 students. Well, we split it, 25 A-list, 25 B-list. A-list is high socioeconomic, and B-list is low socioeconomic. So then, we have this long waitlist of B-list students that are waitlisted, and we have 15 that apply and get in on the A-list. So now we have space available on an A-list, but we can't do anything with that, because we're still held to this A and this B list, so it's really not fair in that sense either. So to eliminate it completely removes that from happening. It's just a fair, you get one list. So the other part of it is the demographics part of it, there's no reason right now to ask for identif, like racially identifiable questions, or, you know, race, gender, ethnicity, those kinds of things are not relevant when you have a lottery system like this, because it should be based off of qualifications, entry criteria, you know, all these things are the important things, not where somebody comes from, what, not what zone they come from, not what they look like, not what their financial background is. So to remove the demographics as well keeps us in line with where we are nationally too, and what, what the federal guidelines are and the state guidelines are for demographics. And then we have the priorities of the application management, the priorities are somewhat of a burden when you get into pathway priorities. We also have sibling priorities, you know, they can enter in at an elementary school level, or at any level if they're multiple, like twins. And then the last part is the waitlist process. Currently, our waitlist system is numbered, and doing research, other districts do a random waitlist, so no one necessarily knows where their number is, and it's a matter of whether they really wanna wait or not, there's no, there's no game there anymore, that, right now, people can, parents can apply to two programs for their kids, or sometimes three programs, and then depending on where they are in the waitlist, they play around with where they wanna be, and then, you know, it just becomes, it delays that process of enrollment and that next step by having that. So eliminating a numbered, going to a random, you just have a bucket, if a space opens up, the, the computer system, the application is set up where it'll automatically generate another random selection and just pull another student randomly. So that's the part about applicant, application management, if anyone has any questions.
I have comments.
Sure.
My personal view is that all of those should be eliminated. I've never agreed with the sibling priority. I understand the argument that it's easier if your kids are at one school, but at some point, your kids are not gonna be at the same school, so it's not an effective argument for me. I think a better way perhaps to look at the lottery process is from the transportation standpoint, because we know from transportation, the cost is killing us to transport kids from the most southern part of the parish up to J. Wallace James, so perhaps what we do is we have rings, maybe, so you say lottery one are people who live within two miles of the school, they apply first, then ring two is those within three miles, and then it's open, but the ones who live outside whatever the zone is, I don't wanna say zone, 'cause that's a different concept, but outside the ring, they can apply, but if they live outside three miles, or four miles, or five miles, they've gotta drive themselves there. That's part of their choice, they wanna choose to go to that school that's far from their house, but they, part of that choice is, you've gotta provide your transportation. We have to look at this kinda cohesively and deal with those transportation issues as well, so that's kind of a very simplistic way to do it, and then using the random waitlist process is a good idea too. That's just my opinion. Mr. Santani?
Just like to make a comment on the transportation portion of it, specifically J. Wallace James, or the schools, the schools that are very popular and full to capacity, you know, it's not that children that live far from J. Wallace James cost more money, it's the combination of children who live far from a school and the bus is not full that costs a lot of money. You know, I've seen some of these James buses in the morning, and they got 65 kids on them. That's a, that's a good bus route, that's a bus route I'm happy to pay for right there, because we're taking $50,000 to $60,000 a year that it costs to operate that bus, and dividing it by 65 kids over 182 days, really gets the cost down to about $3 to $4 a day to transport the students. It's the students or the programs that have five kids on a bus that cost the same $50,000. So I'm intrigued by your, by your rings concept, because that's one way of kinda solving that problem where we don't have enough children on the bus. Another way to do it is kinda what they did, what transportation did with the gifted in the mornings, where they brought the middle schoolers to their elementary schools on the buses that we already had going to their neighborhoods, and really reduced the number of buses they needed to get to Paulboro, so...
Mr. Haddager?
Just wanna say that I agree with you that I could, I agree and would support eliminating all of them.
I think, and we'll probably get to this in a few minutes, but the other thing too is, I mean, we have any number of really good school of choice programs, but it may be time to really look at those that are the most effective, and consider changing some of those that are not. And for example, and when I, I'm using this simply as an example, not as a recommendation to do anything to any program, but the law program, for example, at Northside is fabulous, it's a school of choice, but most of the kids that are in that program are zoned for Northside, so, you know, perhaps it just needs to be considered a special program within Northside. If a child wants to go from Acadia High School to Northside to be in the law program, there should be a policy that permits that, but with the understanding that we will allow you to go to this out-of-zone school for this special program, but you have to provide your own transportation. And so that may just be, for some of the programs that only have a handful of kids coming from out-of-zone, maybe we don't need to consider them schools of choice and take the transportation mix out of that. So that's just another consideration.
Cut back on transportation, do you duplicate programs on opposite ends of the parish? L. Leo's sitting right there, they have a waitlist more than the students, I think they have 375 students in the school, I think they have a waitlist of 375. I don't know how far away they pull from, but it would, it's evidently a great program, I mean, they're an A school, and they don't have gifted or anything, very diversified population, it's a school that built itself into an A school, so, you know, if we could duplicate what they're doing there on another end of the parish, we cut some of the transportation problems.
Ah, sure. So to speak to Ms. Morris, the sibling priority. It was originally established so that it was only, it was only for kindergarten and first graders, or really just kindergarteners, because they understood them to be smaller kids, you know, just they're lower on there. So it was for kindergartners with a sibling that was attending the same school at least for two or three years. So there was some logic behind it, but it wasn't meant to be at every single grade level in elementary school. So I can understand maybe a happy medium to start, because it's still a cultural change too for the entire community. So maybe, you know, one of the ideas that I was thinking of was going back to that original purpose of it strictly for that kindergarten group, or maybe even pre-K now, 'cause some of our programs have pre-K.
And I'll just stop you there, so, yeah, it's a great idea, the problem with it though is, you know, for the pre-K kids entering the program with siblings, well, then they're there, and you're not gonna kick them out when the older sibling's no longer at the elementary, right? So it's kind of a cycling thing, so, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that that is part of the criteria. When we're talking about school of choice, the operative word is choice, the parents are choosing to send their children to a program that's out-of-zone.
Correct.
All right? If they're in zone, it's not an issue. So part of the consideration for those parents should be, I'm choosing to send my child to L. Leo Judees, 'cause it's a fantastic school, but when I make that choice, I understand, I have to figure out how to get my kids to that school if I'll live out-of-zone, okay? And that just, maybe not for the upcoming school year, but maybe this is something that we need to bring in within the next couple of years, with a clear understanding at the beginning, that when you make this choice, your choice includes you getting your kid to the school.
Yes. So, there's a diagram that I uploaded, it's, it's a rough diagram, it's just a conceptual diagram.
Would that be the academy's transportation diagram?
Yes, and it speaks to what Mr. Santani and Ms. Morris were talking about. So imagine J. Wallace James is the bullseye, then you have, J. Wallace James is technically in SJ Montgomery Zone, so SJ Montgomery would be considered that, J. Wallace and SJ Montgomery would be considered the same zone, and then you have these neighboring zones, you have these extensions of these zones, like JW Falk, or Alice Boucher, these are these immediately neighboring zones. So then you'd have, you'd kinda have something either in-zone transportation style, or closer, like more satellite stops offered at these areas, and then when you go outside of that area, you get into another area where you have Live Oak, Evangelion, West Side Prairie, Broadmoor, Woodville, and Plantation kinda touching on those extended areas. So you'd have satellite stops there, that outer area that you were referring to would be like the Carron Crow Heights, the Austin, the Dusan, the Burke, Galette, Milton, Linden, Drexel. Those would either receive these uber mega satellite stops, or it would be at your own or self-transportation. The majority of districts in the US actually utilize something like this, or if the high school level, they give bus passes, in Lafayette, that's not really feasible in our metro area.
Not yet.
Sure. So to speak to, oh, sure.
Mr. Santani?
If you're gonna use the word feasible, I'd point out that there's a city bus stop in front of Lafayette High School, which is one of the largest out-of-zone populations in this parish. There's a bus stop at Northside High School, there's a bus stop at Lord's, which is throwing distance from Como, there's a bus stop at Carmel and Pinhook, which is a mile from David Thibodeau. All it might take is for us to sit down with LCG to see if they would amend their rounds slightly, and then we might be able to offer bus service to the older children, specifically maybe the juniors and seniors, and say, listen, we'll, we'll give you a bus pass, and this might solve your transportation problems if it's, if it's something that their parents would be interested in doing.
Right. East Baton Rouge and New Orleans both do that as well, including some neighboring districts and others, like the neighboring states. Mr. Latchley spoke about duplicating programs that were high popular, highly popular. If you reduce enrollment at some of these schools, like Eleo Judees or J. Wallace James, to go back to permanent building capacity, you could actually take those resources and duplicate something over I-10 to accommodate Carron Crow, Austin, Live Oak, and Evangelion. So it's not necessarily a bad thing to consider doing that, to take these high-popular ones and to do that, the, if some of these, these changes that we're discussing today are on a macro level, they're, they're overall general changes that we need to discuss and, and make some, move forward with some things. And then you take the next year or two and start to establish now new strategies for the future on what you're gonna do with these academies.
Right, and I just wanna point out that, let's say we're using L. Leo Judees, 'cause you're right there in your nice green shirts, okay? So let's say we opened a second campus on the south side of the parish, there's no reason that that can, that cannot still be part of L. Leo Judees. There's nothing that prohibits the school system for, from having a school with two campuses, so you could have, for instance, L. Leo Judees North and L. Leo Judees South, and then you get an incredible principal like Ms. LaMaire, and then some really good assistant principals that are site-based, you know, so just, I mean, I think if we start thinking outside the box, you know, then, and then those two locations are still part of the same system as far as scores and things like that, so I think that we can be creative and start thinking outside of the traditional school location campus idea, and we'll get there later, 'cause I got some thoughts.
The next, the next thing that we looked at, which affects enrollment, is entry criteria. We have several different layers to entry criteria, one is points of entry. Currently, the points of entry are pretty much pre-K through five for elementary, six, seven, eight for middle, nine, 10 for the majority, and then there are three academies that have 11th and 12th grade as well. The suggestion is, is that perhaps maybe eliminating fourth and fifth grade entry, but adding a late entry policy for students who come out of, from another parish that have been in the same program for the last three years, like somebody coming from HIC in Houston, they were displaced, and they've been in a arts and technology academy there. They wanna get in at fourth grade or fifth grade, well, we have space available now, because we haven't saturated it and maxed it out with all these new students that we opened it up to, so we have space for them, and we have students that have been engaged in that, the theme-based learning from K through fourth grade. Right now, we're allowing students in at fourth and fifth grade, well, that's great that they have one or two years of experience in that, but they haven't been there since kindergarten, so they haven't engaged well. So it's, in a sense, almost setting them up for failure too, because they have to catch up where their, their peers are. And then those students also get pathways into programs that expect these students to have five years of saturated immersion in that field of study, for example, STEM. So students from J. Wallace James, they go to STEM, that's their natural pathway. When they get to STEM, if a student just got in at the fifth grade, they're not gonna be at the same level as somebody who's been in there in second grade. So the logic behind that, when you wanna talk about enrollment capacities and transportation, it also lessens the burden of that by eliminating that fourth and fifth grade entry.
I think that sounds logical, restrict entry, and then have a, you can still have an appeal procedure for those that either move in, or maybe someone who discovers that in the third grade, they don't wanna be in arts, they wanna be in STEM, but then you have an appeal process, so that's my opinion.
I'll, I'll speak from experience, my daughter's in fourth grade this year, my wife and I are starting to discuss the different options for middle school, because she's exhibiting different talents or, or, you know, hobbies than maybe she exhibited when she was in kindergarten. So taking into account the fact that preferences in students change over time as they learn what they're good at, where their talents lie, maybe something to take into account as they transition from elementary to middle to high school, and give the parents some flexibility so that they're not making a life decision at five, I suppose would be the way to say it.
So you're saying keep the, or to establish entry criteria, but you agree with having an appeal process?
Oh, sure, sure. I mean, you know, let's, I mean, take for example, my daughter's in the French immersion program, and maybe she wants to focus on STEM, or, or performing arts, or something along those lines in middle school, well, certainly I think we ought to at least, you know, keep the pathway for the current students, but also make sure that we, we leave open that process for new students at the middle school level.
Why is James a pathway to STEM?
Because they're called arts and technology. So they have a technology aspect that qualifies them to go into STEM, because STEM has science, technology, engineering, and math.
Okay, and so what's the current rule for STEM for the, the first level, if you did not go to James? The James kids get priority, but...
Yes, so, so James, James students in fifth grade going into the sixth grade get priority at LJ Alama and STEM.
So they get priority at two different schools?
Correct.
From one school?
Correct. And so the way it works, for example, with Alama is, Alama gets a list of, I think it's like 100-something, 150, 200 students that are applying, that are marked as priority to get into LJ Alama, because they've fulfilled the requirements at J. Wallace James and have been there. Some of the students get in at fourth and fifth grade, and then get priority automatically and take away a spot for somebody who's had experience in piano, maybe came from another school, like JW Falk. So, but the student at J. Wallace James gets priority into Alama, so the students, those are the two pathway priorities from Wallace.
So really, the ideal thing to do is to get your kid into James, because you get a priority choice of... because you get a priority choice of two very good schools, STEM and Alama.
Which is, if you remember what happened with Performing Arts Academy going from Lafayette High to Como, that's why you saw a decrease in enrollment in Como because that was the original purpose for, not everyone, but for a large number of parents.
Well, that and the administrative rule that has delayed things. But, so one thing, and this is not really what we're discussing tonight, but I've mentioned to Dr. Aguilard, is that we really need to consider over the next few years having a STEM elementary school that's standalone and separate from the arts academy. Okay? So, but that's a different issue for another day.
So I have a question on the Arts and Technology. What is the, so are these students learning arts and technology? Or are they on a path of arts or technology? Do they have a curriculum that covers both? How does that work?
The technology-
What makes it technology?
The technology aspect, from what I was told and what I've researched and speaking with assistant principal and the principal, the technology is the literal technology that's embedded into all the other stuff that they do, like the iPads, the computer lab, strictly technology as a device. The arts, however, is very sophisticated. The teachers are all trained. They're Kennedy Center-trained and certified teachers. Their arts program is very, very strong and it's very well-known and recognized as well. The technology, though, is just really that-
I think that's an example of, I think that's a perfect example of a broken part of the process. Using an iPad does not prepare a child to be in a STEM environment. And to have, to even allude to the fact that a kid should go from, that is being prioritized and prepared notionally to go into a STEM environment, I think it's a disservice to the kid too. I mean, they're not prepared to go into a STEM environment if they've never been exposed to STEM-type classes. So, all right, thank you. Next part's my favorite part, so.
Points of entry restrictions, we talked about that in the appeal for, okay, so requirements. Requirements for entry. It's important to recognize that when we're doing this activity and looking at all the different options, what other districts did, where we are currently, where we should be, where we could be. Before I go into this, I just want to explain that we do have entry requirements. They haven't been enforced as much, but they are there in some places. The object of the research and the evaluation that I did was to see what we can do to streamline those entry requirements. So across-the-board, the requirements, so the standards again are higher. So we start out with elementary school. Elementary is exploratory, so you can't really put a lot of requirements on there. A kindergartner isn't going to know, isn't going to have a 2.0 GPA. So in elementary school, you, the least we can do is to have parents make at least one effort, to show intent. And for the sustainability of our programs, it's all about intent, right? So students come in with the intention of learning something for an environment. Parents supply for various reasons. Those are their intent. And that intent goes into investment. So at least if we have a statement of intent for the academies at an elementary school level, we know what the parents are looking for. We know what their intention is to have their child into that program, so we can look at that. Having informational sessions to explain what the curriculum is, what the extracurricular activities are, what to expect from your child when they come home in this immersed program, whether it's language, arts, or technology, or STEM, or environmental science. And then at the least, the next level, the least we can do is, if we're going to eliminate 4th and 5th grade entry, then naturally 3rd grade would be that last point of general entry. So you could at least ask for some kind of conduct grade. Is the child, it's a touchy subject, but one to discuss for sure. Conduct grade is really important because some of these academies, they experience discipline issues or they experience kids who don't want to be in there. There's a lot, there's a range of all these reasons why something might happen. So one of the other things that you could look at is conduct grade because there's no other grade that you can look at really between K through 3. So that's elementary, if anyone wants to-
I agree. I mean, I think you have to have some criteria and you don't want to send a student who's disruptive in their traditional environment into a magnet or special environment and expect them to change.
Middle school, it's a step up. So if it's an arts academy, you have an audition or you have a portfolio for visual arts, the least they can do is write a little essay, whether it's 100 words or 150 words. It's all about intent. It's all about making an extra step and showing effort and really, really wanting to be part of something. Some of the academies have expressed interest in doing interviews again. I know in the past, they used to do interviews. Again, like for 6th grade entry, looking at the overall conduct grade for K through 5. C or higher in core classes, or C+ or higher in core classes for 7th grade entry. The reason this last part says C+ or higher is because, let's say you have a student entering in at 6th grade and they're 1.9 or 2.0, they're barely a C. This isn't about like, oh, we want, you know, high IQ students. This is just some kind of standard. So the student comes in with a low C. Well, as an academy program, our curriculum and our teachers are so great that we're going to take a student from a C to a C+ or even a B. So if a student's coming in at the 7th grade level, we want them to be at the same standard and the same level as all those students that we worked hard for and taught them and took them up to that level. Because the expectation is the student in academy is going to excel in several different areas. So that's why that last number 6 is written that way. Any questions?
The interview portion, what do you envision there? Is that something that happens outside of the school, the school day?
It all depends on the schedule of the academy directors and the principals or the leads at the schools. So yes, it could happen during the school day or after the school day or on a Saturday. Most of the places do them in the afternoons after school or on Saturdays.
I think the buy-in component is just as important as anything else here. And that's why you see some other non-public schools, that's one component of other non-public school success, is not just the student being interested, but the parent's involvement. And to make the interview not during the day when it's so easy, not to make the interview hard to get to, but to make it to where there's buy-in, I think is just one little minor component that's important to me.
And at least for the middle school level, the conduct grade should be a B or higher. I mean, we want to have high standards, so, I mean, if their behavior is such, I mean, a C, it's average. But perhaps we want to elevate the kind of conduct we're expecting from kids because it is a privilege to be able to go to a school out of zone with a special program.
My opinion too is, sorry, Mary, but I think that for both middle and high school, you should have a standard core requirement and that can be your core classes, your conduct grade and all that. But it seems to me that each, and I think that's what you're saying here, that each academy should have a different criteria for the special, the special skills that the child demonstrates. Because I can tell you, the Eric Kinesik that went into middle school should not have been in any sort of arts, you know? I was, I didn't have the talent for it and I shouldn't have been admitted to arts, but maybe I should have been enrolled in a STEM program. So that's all I have to say.
So in the middle school, there's no computerized generation. It's all, you know, essays, interviews. Are someone actually selecting these kids? There's nothing generated through the computer like the other grades?
Oh, okay. So the way that, these are, these are not, I don't want to use the word qualifiers, but these are entry criteria points that have to be met and fulfilled and, for the application, for the application process to be complete. So then, once the application process is complete, if space is available and there's, you know, if there's no need for a lottery, they get in. If it's one of those programs where we need to use a lottery to choose who are, how the students are being accepted, then they enter the lottery. But the point is to get to that point where enrollment happens, where the invitation happens for them to come into the program. These are what we look at. So, high school, the standards get a little bit higher. I guess now with Ms. Morris's recommendation for the conduct in high school, then it should be B or higher for 9th grade entry. But again, we do the auditions and portfolios for performing and visual arts, essays for the academies, interviews for any academy that wants to do interview, letters of recommendation. For example, Jared DC loves to do letters of recommendation. Some of the other schools, I think it was Health Careers, used to do letters of recommendation. So the academy directors alike also want to go back to some of these elements to make sure that these students, the point is to make sure that you have invested students who have an intention of staying in these programs, contributing to the programs, coming back to the programs and contributing, and making sure that the program is successful around.
Now that I see Ms. Morrow is in the audience, can we get her to come up here and put her on the spot just a little bit? Because I think the Academy of Health Careers is an excellent example of what Mr. Kinesik's driving at, where it's an academy with high standards, excellent outcomes, and they've done a really good job of screening their students going from 8th to 9th grade to ensure that they are interested, that they're engaged, the parents are engaged, and that they maintain a high level of excellence throughout their years at Lafayette High. So could you tell us about your entry process for the Academy of Health Careers in high school?
Well, right now, our entry requirements are an essay or a letter of intent that has to deal with their interest in actual health careers. We have had students in the past that write their essay that says that they want to come to Lafayette High because that's where their mom went to school and it's a great school and I want to be a chef, but I really want to be in the health academy. So those are some of the things that we were able to, in the past, kind of remove that student. And we don't remove them. We contact them and tell them their letter of intent has not been accepted. They have until the deadline to refresh that maybe, you know, before they can get in. And a lot of times, they don't. They don't fix that. Another thing that we do is parents have to attend an informational session and we require parents to sign in and they have a commitment form that they turn in on their way out. And we kind of list our expectations that they have to maintain a C in our program. We let them know prior to the lottery what our expectations are and we kind of collect that. So if they come to the meeting and they don't turn their form in, that lets us know that they are not committed to what we are asking and those students are not accepted into the lottery. We also check grades. We check for a C or higher in math and science. Just as an opinion, I'm all in favor of the core classes also, you know, if we could do something like that. But that will also take some of those students out of that situation. Yes. And can I say something about the conduct for high school? Is there any way that instead of conduct, it could be discipline referrals, maybe from the middle school, that we look at? I don't know if they still do conduct grades, but discipline, you know, like looking at discipline referrals. So if we have students that have had major disciplines or have been at MP Moss all of 8th grade, you know, if we could look at that.
We can do, sure. That's great input. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Angel?
I was ready to get out.
Yes, ma'am. Do all of the students who enter the Health Academy as a freshman in high school come from elementary Health Academy?
We do not have an elementary program. Our program-
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Middle school. Yes, sir. Our middle school, our feeder middle school is Carron Crow Middle Biomedical Academy. And honestly, we have a very low enrollment from Carron Crow Middle.
So earlier, she was talking about, you know, I don't remember exactly what program it is. It seems to me like you were alluding to the fact that if you're not in this program for K-1, 2, 3, maybe you shouldn't come in in grade 4 or 5. And this lady is saying many of them that go to the Health Academy haven't been to a Health Academy. So, I mean, you know, some students, it looks like can catch up or whatever, even though they don't have the, all of the preliminary courses, you know, in that particular-
And in our situation, our academy is very academic, you know, rigorously academic, science and math. So I don't, you know, I don't know how, yeah, there isn't a pathway that's coming from the elementary school just yet, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Those who do not make the entry qualifications, for whatever reasons, and they're out of zone, are they required at that time to return to their zone school or they allowed to stay at Lafayette High?
Well, they would not even go into the lottery, so they would not even have the opportunity to be selected. So they've never left their zone school. Once a student is in our program, they don't reapply. This is just kind of the entrance for them to get in that first time in either 9th grade or 10th grade.
Basically, you're saying they have to apply to even be allowed to go into the lottery?
Yes, ma'am. And that's for all schools of choice. I mean, that's not just ours. That's all schools of choice. The students have to apply. If they don't complete the application process for any, not just ours, for any program, they would, of course, then go to their zone school, you know, because they're not even considered for-
If I may, I think when Mr. Bruce starts asking, you mentioned earlier that they must maintain a 2.0 in your academy courses?
Okay, so you're asking, once they're in, once they're in our program-
What happens if a kid makes a 1.5 after their sophomore year?
Yes, okay. So right now, we check report cards every nine weeks. And so if they make, we check report cards every nine weeks. If they have a D or an F in their classes, we have meetings with every single student. It's very time-consuming, but it's one way for us to follow up with them. So we meet with them and then at the end of the year, we look at final grades. So it doesn't matter what they have. They could have an F in the first nine weeks, an F in the second nine weeks, an F in the third nine weeks. They're staying in our school and they're staying in our program. But in the end of the year, they would not be allowed to continue. They would have to go back to their zone school.
How long have the program been in existence?
Ours? Since 2004.
In those 13 years, what is, I know the students that leave Lafayette High, they're academically intelligent. What is the success? Did we produce scientists or doctors or brain surgeons or something?
Not yet. It's a long time before they-
What is our success rate as far as coming from the Lafayette High, going into the medical program at one of the universities and completing it? And, you know, did they go the whole term or do we even know what happens after?
So before they graduate, our group of internship students, we do student exit interviews with them before they leave. And I would say that probably 80% of our students want to go into nursing. There's probably about 5% or 6% that want to be medical doctors or, you know, and then another small percentage like physical therapy. But we do have students that at the end, they're like, "You know what, Ms. Morrow? Those, I can't deal with patients. I don't like, you know, I want to go into architecture or accounting." So we do have some, you know, we do have some students that will not continue. We do have several students in medical school right now. We have tons of students in nursing school. We have a lot of nurses at Lafayette General Women's and Children's and Our Lady of Lourdes who are now mentors for our interns and they were at one time interns themselves. So I think we're pushing out a ton of healthcare providers in our area. But I will tell you that our attrition rate is the highest after 9th grade. We lose the largest number of students at the end of 9th grade for Ds or Fs. The highest number we've ever had was 22 and then that's when they allowed us to start checking grades, C or better. And since then, we have only lost probably about 10 students per year for those grades. And what we see is that in the sophomore year, we may only lose three students and the junior and senior, you know, the junior year, we rarely lose any.
Thank you. We are very, very interested in your program. We have about 11 minutes left for this workshop, so we may have to schedule another one because we definitely want to hear more. Ozzy, there are a couple of issues that I want to make sure we address, so I'm going to go quickly and it's going to probably be out of order.
Okay.
One is the capacity issue. When we were advertising for the sales tax, we talked about the overcrowding of some of our schools. And when I looked at your chart here, some of the schools that we talked about the most in the sales tax were Prairie and Evangelion. And what this chart tells me is that, and Alama as well. What the chart tells me is that at Prairie, we, the school system, are bringing in almost 400 students that are out of zone and we are overcrowding that school voluntarily with the French immersion program. Same with Evangelion with about 100 kids. So we need to really, I'm not suggesting reducing the size of the French immersion programs, but this gets back to what I said earlier, that we have to look perhaps at non-traditional school sites because it's crazy in my mind that we are voluntarily overcrowding the schools and putting 300 or 400 kids into temporary buildings when we don't have to do that. So we may need to hire an engineer or an expert who can do a survey, Mr. Kinesik can speak to this better, of the available buildings in Lafayette, perhaps not school buildings. But again, like I mentioned earlier- buildings in Lafayette, perhaps not school buildings. But again, like I mentioned earlier, one, for example, and this is just an example, C is just closing down. There's that huge location that was gonna be available. We'd have an engineer or expert go in and examine it or evaluate it for purposes of using as a school site. And it, again, if it was Prairie, for example, it could be Prairie Elementary French Campus. And it's still part of Prairie, but it's just located down the street. But they're not in temporary buildings. So I think that that's something that we have to consider.
One of the things that we've been looking at doing, and I've spoken to Tia Lebrun, our world language specialist, is, and we talked about this in the committees, too, for duplicate programs, students can only apply to the school closest to them. So right now, we have students all the way up north of ITI and close to Evangeline, quite possibly even in the Evangeline zone, that are applying and getting in through the lottery system at Prairie. So we're bussing them clear across an interstate to go to a school. So if, if the purpose, if the intent is to learn French, then you could go to the same, the school that's closest to you. If the intent is go to a school that's farther away because you don't like your school, that's a different story. So when we talk about these, and overextending ourselves, and we have this capacity, and we have enrollment numbers, and we have these temporary buildings, that's pretty much what's happened over time, is that, that's what's happened. So one of the, these suggestions, one of the options is to, for duplicate academies, whether it's, you know, a STEM academy, or a Health Careers Academy, or a French immersion, for students to only be able to go to that school that's closest to them.
Well, that makes all the sense in the world.
Yeah, it does. So, and like for Alamo, for example, I mean, it is almost 100% the art school. There aren't very many in-zone kids there. But because it's overcrowded, we might have to make an executive decision and say, we're reducing the number of kids who can be admitted to that program, and over time, it's gonna reduce the population at that school. And maybe it's reducing the number of seats by 25 for the next entering class. And then it just is reduced a little bit. I mean, to me, it's just crazy that we put all of those commercials on TV about kids running from the temporary buildings in the rain, and then when I look at the data, like, but we're sending those kids to those schools voluntarily. It's not even their zone schools. So it's something that has to be addressed.
Part of that is because those J. Wallace James students are guaranteed entry into LJ Alamo.
Yeah, well, that's, that's the policy we need to look at. Mr. Santani?
For the next time we discuss this, can I, can we please also have the number of teachers in each academy, as well as the number of students by grade level?
There is a chart that has that generally. And they're trying to also complete the chart to show which kids in the academies are zone versus out of zone. They don't have that for all the schools yet.
That would be, that would be perfect, because I'm, I'm most interested in, I think, a big portion of our cost of schools of choice, as you mentioned earlier, is transportation.
Right. And the last point I want to make, and I want to, we have about five minutes, is that looking at the immersion programs, it looks like in the French immersion in elementary school, we have about 845 kids total. That reduces, or goes down to about 171 in middle school, and then to about 90 in high school. So where are those 900 French immersion kids going after they finish? They're not going to middle school, so-
Right. So our, our research shows that the students that are in an academy program that choose not to pursue French immersion at Paulborough are either going to, are applying to LJ Alamo for arts or STEM.
So they're really in the French immersion as a pathway to other schools that aren't really their pathway schools?
It's not a pathway. It's just, they either fulfilled that desire to have their children learn a language and they're done with it, or, again, it goes back to that, I just want my child to go to a different school. And French immersion, we only have two real academy programs at the elementary school level, J. Wallace James and Elio. The only other options that parents have in elementary school are these immersion programs.
Right. Yeah. So if we're only having 20% of the kids go to Paulborough from the immersion, it may be that our elementary-sized French immersion program's just too large. Or we need to look at expanding our middle school French immersion options to some degree. And then I don't know what happens. I guess when they go to high school, they're, they're just done with language generally. All right. Are they test out? Okay. So that's something else we need to consider, too. I think Lafayette has, has about 90 high school French immersion kids.
Right. And if you look at the whole French immersion and what you're talking about, it goes back to that concept, that, that thought of, what is the investment, what is the intent? And I know from conversations before, I think we talked about Southside, you talked about alumni support. That plays, I mean, if you peel off all these layers of these onions and look at all these connectors, that also has a big part to do with it. When you have invested students that are contributing, that want to, they come back. You have a tax proposal, those students come back and say, I was part, we have 6,000 students annually in our schools of choice programs collectively. So when you look at the future of that, all these little elements fall into place.
All right. Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes. Start off by thanking you for presenting this information. This is a lot of information, and I frankly think it's awesome that we can have an honest conversation about something that is, certainly could be controversial, and is certainly issues that we have with the school system. With that said, Madam President, I don't know what kind of timeline. It's not there's a rush to make a decision today, tomorrow, next week. However, it did take three months to get this information. And I think that we need to have some kind of a timeline. This board needs some kind of a timeline to start making these decisions and figuring out how we're gonna phase any possible changes into, you know, the school system.
I agree. Mr. Kinesic?
I would volunteer to be a part. Either we send this to, I feel like, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Aguilar, staff is looking to us as the board to give you clear direction. And it's hard to do that in this, in this forum, but I would be willing to volunteer with any, anyone else here to sit on a committee specifically to address schools of choice, to come weekly, twice a week, whatever is necessary to be, to take part in this discussion so that we can move this forward, and then bring those recommendations, more recommendations instead of a discussion back to the board.
Right. I agree. And I think I have the authority to appoint a committee. So-
You do.
So who else on the board would like to sit on the schools of choice committee? Mr. Hidalgo, Mr. Kinesic, anyone on this side of the table? All right. Then I'll put myself on it as well. All right. And so, Mr. Bruceford, you want to be, oh, you have a question? Okay. Well, this is the, the board portion of the committee, because there are, it's already a school of choice. I don't know if it's a committee or a group. So whenever, what do you think, Eric, meeting about-
Dr. Aguilar, I think they have a working committee, but I'll let Dr. Aguilar comment.
So members of the board-
Mr. Bruceford, you gonna be on the committee?
Yes, yes. I think it's important that I, I think it's, I think it's important that I sit. I just, it, this, this is great, but, but, but I need to make sure that everyone gets the opportunity. And some may not quite meet the criteria that we are setting, but I want to make sure that everyone gets the opportunity-
Sure.
-to, to get, be involved in the schools of choice program. So with that being said, I will sit on it, school of choice program.
I would say, let's tentatively plan to set a schools of choice committee meeting within November timeline, either the first or second, I'm sorry, October, I'm further down.
October.
In October. And if there's any interim meetings, of course, we need to post a notice when we are present, but if there are any interim meetings of the staff portion-
We can do that. So, so members of the board, you have literally been without policies or regulations since 2015. The first policy was drafted by a board in 2005. It was updated at least twice. And in 2015, the policy, language, student assignments, was stripped of regulations regarding schools of choice. So we literally have in policy JBCC only one paragraph that speaks to schools of choice. So we've been operating without any rules or regulations for two years. What I'd like to do is, is work with the board members, Ozzy, Annette, and so on. We need to draft an administrative rule that details expectations for schools of choice. I'd like us to work weekly until we can get something to the board in October for consideration. We are fast approaching the time when we start making moves for the upcoming school year. So we're ready to work with you to try to build some regulations that would become an administrative rule addressing schools of choice.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna adjourn this workshop. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll start the regular meeting.